That's what we say.
Really?
Yeah.
How are you doing?
Yeah.
You went so long.
Yeah.
You actually straightened it up far.
You've been able to be.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I was gonna say visit.
Well.
But they.
Take it down.
Thank you.
We're going to date you.
Oh.
Let's.
Hello.
How are you?
You're the best.
More.
I thought that when I was.
Go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have more.
Yeah.
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 Most of that.
We're going to date you.
Oh.
Let's.
Hello.
How are you?
You're the best.
Yeah.
More.
Obviously, more.
I thought that when I was.
Go.
Go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 It's your origin, I mean, all.
Yeah.
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 You're good.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
And everyone was right back.
This is.
Is this.
Where are you going?
Is this.
Yeah.
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 A flare up.
I know.
Oh.
Coke.
You're right. You're right.
I mean, just.
Oh, you said.
Why?
Why did you want me to move on from there? Because that's where I had you.
Ah. So there.
We're okay. We're good.
Good morning.
You say, ready?
Uh, so, I. Some of them were, I believe, in the agenda. I just.
Oh, is this just a.
I just wanted.
Just this one picture?
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
They're oriented with respect to.
Hopefully, they're not today.
So, counsel. Counsel.
All right. Let's call the meeting to order, please. Renee, would you please do a roll call? Mr. Roach.
I'm here.
Mrs. Orthwine.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Let it also be known, President participating is Town Manager Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney, Trey Nazaro, myself, and absent with notice is Malcolm Murphy, Bob Doherty, Paul Lyons, Brian Coulter, and Kerry Power.
Thank you, Renee. We all had our minutes in advance of this meeting. Do either of you have any comments, questions, changes, or deletions?
No.
If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the former meeting.
I second.
Renee?
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwine.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Dunham, are there any additions, withdrawals, deferrals, or arrangements of the agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Announcements. You see, we do not have an August meeting. Start again on September 26th. If either of you or I know that we're not going to be here at that meeting, please let Renee know as soon as possible. Renee, why are the TBDs on November and December, they conflict with Christmas and Thanksgiving again?
They do.
Okay. Okay. I think we can move into the public hearing part of the meeting today. Is there any declaration of ex parte communication?
No.
No? Thank you. Renee, would you administer the oath to all those who may speak today?
Hannah, raise your right hand.
Come on.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help us out.
That is true.
If I don't know who you are, please make sure I get your name when you leave. I think I know most of you, but.
All right. First up today is an application by Richard Gould, his agent for Borshymers, and I believe this is a continuation of something we had at our previous meetings. Ben Gras?
Yes. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Last time we met, I think most of you were here. It was a discussion on 9:45 indigopoint, and it was about artificial turf. And the one thing at that particular meeting I was not aware of is your ordinance in place that has certain percentage of. You basically use artificial turf as a hard surface, as impervious. With that calculation redone in front of you, you should all have a sheet that we redid. So, it's showing the backyard, all the darker green areas are all sod now, which real grass, and the replica turf is only around the fire pit only, which is only 280 square feet. So, we basically changed out all the other areas that were going to be artificial turf to real grass.
What about this, the area to the right of the pool that had originally been requested to?
That is grass. That's grass.
So, it's going to be grass, too?
Yeah. Yeah. So, the only.
All grass or sod. The only artificial turf is going to be around the.
The fire pit.
The fire pit.
Yes.
Are you keeping that low hedge that we talked about along the.
Yes.
Sea wall?
Yes. That's already in.
Buffer.
Yes. That'll be a buffer all the way along the whole sea wall.
I can show you some photos of that, Mr. Smith.
I've got a pretty good visual. I have a trade. Does this need all of the percentages and square footage?
So, the question that I have is, the home was approved with a certain amount of landscaped open space that would only allow an addition of 115 additional square feet. So, has there been an adjustment with removing part of a walkway or other impervious areas to accommodate this excess of 115 square feet?
Well, right now, where we are is a calculation is at 41, 41.55 percentage. Forty is pervious. We're at 41. So, we're a little better than what your code is for pervious areas.
I'm wondering if that was before the driveway change?
Yeah. The driveway originally changed a little bit because the septic field was so large, we had to swing it to the left. So, we cut off a piece of that driveway.
So, that was done subsequent to the original home approval?
Yes.
So, within permitting and everything that was adjusted?
Correct.
Okay. Given that sworn testimony regarding the adjustment of the driveway to decrease the impervious, I think that we're okay with the calculation.
You did. The driveway got compressed a little on.
To the left. It moved to the left a little bit.
Okay. And did you take away some patio stones around either the left or the right? How did it happen? That did it? The driveway?
Oh, yeah.
The driveway did it? The change is there? Okay. Curtis or Katie, any questions?
Well, you know, looking at this, at the thing that you had to hand out, the only part, the only artificial turf is going to be that little half, half-green square.
Where it shows replica.
Or half-green rectangle.
Yeah. It shows replica. Right.
And that is, how many square feet is that?
280 square feet.
Okay. Okay. Now, that's an improvement from what I had seen and read before.
Any other questions? I think, I think we're good. Thank you. You guys did a nice.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Can one of you?
Okay. All right, well. Pretty well, like, good. So.
What you have in front of you, you may need to change a little bit.
Yes.
Excuse me?
What you have in front of you, you may need to change up a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the inclusion of artificial turf and landscaping modifications, which now meet the criteria of the design manual and the applicable reviews.
Is there a second?
I second.
Moving seconded, Renee?
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwine.
Yes.
Chairman Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Great improvement.
Thank you.
Next up, Paul Corshin. Morning.
I'm Luis from Affinity Architects.
Give me just a second now.
Does Renee have your contact info and name?
She should, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two things go.
Okay. They've got it in front of them.
Okay. Good. Today, we're presenting Lot 8, Bluewater Cove. This is a new home Georgian style. What we tried to do with this new home was make sure that it was different from any other one in the street. It ended up being way less than the allowable square footage. So, other than that, we don't have any height restrictions because it's a one-story. And the main thing we tried to do was, we have another two Georgian style in that same street. We want to make sure that all of those look different from one another, so we used different trim details, different overhang details. So, we believe it's completely different from the rest. And, and again, we're way below the square footage allowable for that area in that lot.
Does this application include the dock, or is that coming to us later?
Yes.
I mean, it's in here, but are you, is the dock part of this request?
I'm not sure.
I don't think so. I believe it's part of the community that.
Okay.
One that was already approved. They will type it out.
Yeah. We dealt with that before. A house has to be built before the dock could be built.
Right. There. So, one of the issues in here is the, is the front entry?
Mm-hmm.
And you've given us an example of two different heights of a front entry? Because Trey, could you refresh our committee, what's going on at the town commission level?
Sure. So, the, excuse me, our massing ad hoc committee met, and staff had a number of items that we were talking about. One of them was entry features for one- and two-story homes. That was sort of put to staff to make a recommendation to the town commission to make an adjustment as staff was sort of suggesting after looking into the issue. So, we presented ordinance 24/1 for first reading last month, which would increase two-story entry features a certain amount. And in that ordinance was also an increase in one-story structures' entry feature from 14 to 16 feet. So, if you see in your application materials, there is a 16-foot entry feature that the applicant is seeking approval for, which would be consistent with the ordinance as, as anticipated to be approved on second reading at the next meeting. So, you can go ahead and review this with an eye toward that 16-foot entry feature being acceptable under the code. Certainly, if you have any issues, or if you would prefer the, you know, the lower entry feature, we can have that discussion as well as part of a recommendation to the town commission.
Are any of the other houses on, in, in Bluewater going to have 16-foot entry features?
Possibly.
Just possibly? Okay. Like, all of the ones that have so far been constructed are 14 or less?
I believe the.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah. Lot 4 was 14 feet.
Okay. Well.
Well, if we approve it, we would be approving it subject to the commission.
The commission approving the 16-foot.
I actually think that the higher, architecturally, the higher entryway looks better on this than the lower one. I don't know. You just feel okay with that?
Yeah. My only, my only feeling, now, obviously, this is the, the house that is at the end of the cove and sort of the, the pre, one of the two premier properties. So, I can see it getting, you know, a little bit of extra footage. But I was just concerned that I didn't want it to look like, you know, this is the elite structure on, you know, because, because it's a, it's a development that should be harmonious.
Sure.
And, but I, too, agree that the, you know, the pictures we have here of it make it look fine, subject to approval of the commission.
And that is taken to the very top of the roof entry feature. So, you know, it is, you know, essentially a 16-foot tall, you know, roof is kind of how it was put by the developer. That's just a small roof over, you know, where they're, they're going to be landing. Portica shares, I think, are prohibited under the code, so you're not going to get a very large, massive entry feature that has a large square footage underneath. Also, within the ordinance, we just cleaned up the language a little bit regarding entry features. So, it'll read, "Entry features, if used, shall provide a sense of arrival, yet shall not overpower them or the remainder of the structure." So, there's that, there's that key into, it's okay to be 16 feet as long as it doesn't sort of detract, or the massing is inconsistent with the rest of the, the structure, or, you know, the scale and proportion of entry features shall be consistent with the rest of the structure. So, if there's something that makes that stand out a little bit too much, we would have purview within the code to say, you know, that's, may meet at 16 feet, but the rest of the ordinance, you know, it's, it's falling short.
It also ties in the eve height, ties in a little better in the higher one, I believe, at least in this one. Is there someone here that can tell us a little bit about the landscaping plan, or?
Yes.
That's a blank slate, isn't it?
Good morning. My name's Louis Vlahos, Justicus Landscape Architects. The landscape, basically, was, it was somewhat of a challenge considering that the garage and we had almost a double driveway going into the back with the motor court. For one of the main features to screen from adjacent properties and so forth, we're proposing an eight-to-10-foot property line hedge on all sites. As you can see, two large date ponds in the front, on either side of the entry, kind of keeping with the formality of Georgian style and so forth. And so is the, the under-story landscape. And obviously, we've got the two existing live oaks, which are streetscape trees at both corners of the property coming in. And then in the center there, another large element, just a large ligustrum. We didn't want to overpower or hide the date ponds. It was just something that basically, as you walk inside and outside, you're not looking at down the street, for say. Under-story plants, as you can see, the elevations basically complementing the architectural. And in, in the back, we have an infinity-sized pool. Per owner's request, we eliminated a lot of our initial paving, and as you can see, there's a lot of grass even between the separation of the pool and the spa. We created some privacy around the spa, and a lot of the color that you see in our rendering is per, again, per owner's request. She loved bougainvillas and other flowering plants, so that's basically what we are proposing. But in the back, basically, two large date ponds, some fox tail ponds that are complementing the architecture, architecture elevations in the rear. And basically, we have a, a small fire pit and seating area to the south, southeast, I should say, and to the northeast. Obviously, it's just some low privacy for the, for the in-ground spa. The plantings around it provide privacy for the owner, but at the same token, do not obscure any of the views to the water. That said, any.
What was the hedge material going to be?
We are proposing eight-to-10-foot caliphile. We found it available, full to the ground, and it'll be, the effect will be immediate.
It'll go in hot, six or eight feet right from the beginning?
It'll be eight foot.
Okay.
Any questions from either of you? Nope?
No.
Okay. Greg? Trey?
Yes, sir.
Very, very nice. We need a motion.
Actually, I have one. From a setback perspective, is a fire pit considered a minor accessory structure?
So, it is, and we don't have any detail on whether that is going to be a built-in, or if they're just going to kind of move it out. So, that's something that was, did come up on our review and discussions with the owner, so we can just maybe get some clarity. Do you know if that fire pit is a permanent structure, or if it's just pavers?
More than likely, it's, it's going to be a prefabricated, it won't be a built-in, for example. But even if it was, we meet all the setback requirements in, in the front. We have the 20-foot rear requirement from the water and the 10-foot property line setback from, from the property line. So, if they do change, we do meet their requirements, but more than likely, we might not even have one. So, it's a seating area, basically, is what it is right now. It's an option for the owners to decide upon if they want to add to it down the road. We'll, we'll have gas lines, et cetera, provided for, for the fire pit, but it won't be something that will be a built-in.
Anything from you?
No. I'm good. We need a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a Level 3 architectural site plan based on the finding that the construction of a 6,343-square-foot Georgian one-story, single-family dwelling with a three-car garage and swimming pool, including new landscape and arid scape, meets a minimum intent of the design manual, proposed ordinance 24/1, and applicable review standards with the following conditions. One, any minor modification of the approved landscaping shall be submitted to the town manager for, for review and approval, and any major modification shall be brought back to the ARPV for, for review and approval prior to commencement of the landscaping.
I second.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwine.
Yes.
Chairman Smith.
Yes. Thank you.
My apologies. They have updated this system, and it's not letting me share, so y'all are going to have to use your paper in front of you for this meeting.
Thank you. Three. Mark Conley. Good morning.
My name's Mark Conley. I'm agent for the project and one of the managing partners of our architecture firm, Shred International Architecture. With me is my fellow partner, Paul Charette, founder of the firm. The project in and of itself, there's a rear cabana already on the property, and essentially, this is a, I won't say a refresh, but it's a replacement. That's a better word for it. Demolishing the existing cabana, building a new cabana in its place. We are within setbacks. We are not asking for any variances. We are within height restrictions. It's a very simple 300-square-foot structure facing the waterway behind the property at 16 South. And I believe that is 16 South Hidden Harbor, and I believe that's about it. 300-square-foot cabana replacement with no variances requested. Single-story, no height restrictions.
My, I had a question. The roof itself, it's kind of not symmetrical, but I guess it's because it, it ties into the architectural style of the house itself.
There is a lot.
I could see the picture. There's no, it wasn't designed that later on, you're going to want to go out six more feet on that side to make it a symmetrical roof?
That's correct. Yeah. The, the house itself, if you look at some of the front and rear of the house, has a lot of the sloping shed roofs that this is very much mimicking and tying in with the overall architectural style of the existing residence.
Well, I noted from reading the, reading the past minutes, which I was not at that meeting, about the, the exposure of glass, and that's all. Trey, is that now all been brought into?
Yes. That was a pre-application meeting with staff where we indicated that they would, they would need to meet a certain percentage of glass, so that has been reduced and is, is met.
They take into consideration the house and, and the new structure, or the?
It was just the structure itself.
Self?
Yeah.
It's down to only 40% glass?
I think it's.
Something.
Thirty-four, I thought I read, or something.
I think in the kind of architectural drawing rendering, I, I see it's.
So, there was originally some additional glass on top of the, the door, I guess, area, which has been removed.
Katie, any questions, comments?
Is any vegetation being removed to construct the new cabana?
There might have been some existing ground planting around the backside that was for screening, and our client is coming back in with full, fresh landscape plan in two months, I guess.
But, but no trees?
Huh?
No trees?
No, no trees. No.
No tree removal? Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Well, I think of it as being a lot of glass still, but I'm not, you know, as long as it meets the criteria, I don't see any.
Well, we can look at that. I think the wall, it would be the wall facing the water, which would be the north elevation we're talking about, right? Maybe you could just explain to us what, what you changed.
Yeah. It was the transom glass over the.
Oh, okay. So, the sliders are.
Were removed.
Okay. So, the sliders are whatever the fold-back doors are as a glass portion, that you didn't change that size of that opening?
No. It was just transom removed. I mean, they want to use it as, you know, during the beautiful weather of the winter, you know, as an open. weather of the winter, you know, as an open-
And that's why it's as open as it is.
What else is on the side there? There's a garden station, and then is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
It's going to tie into the existing septic system. Is, is there plumbing to the one you're taking out?
Yes.
There is already, okay.
Yeah, there's already an existing bathroom and sink in the existing structure. It's a wash.
We need a motion. Is there other questions?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a demolition permit to remove the existing cabana structure. We have to, can we do all three at once?
We do need three separate approvals. You need to do them separately.
I second.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwyne?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve a landing clearing permit to clear existing vegetation to allow for a new cabana.
I second.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwyne?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
And thirdly, I'll make a motion to approve a Level 2 architectural site plan to permit a new 300-square-foot, one-story cabana.
I second.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwyne?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Dustin Mizell? Or Tom?
Dustin.
Oh, yeah, I don't think so.
Good morning, Environment Design Group, Erica Gottsagan. Nice to see you. Here with Mr. Murphy and Jason Bader for the variance application for 555 Pelican Lane for a dock application. Concrete dock that we are, is being refurbished. And this was brought about as a completion of the seawall restoration project, which was obviously necessary. And we've also, last month, had approved a site plan and landscape plan for the same site. I'm going to not go into details, but I'll hand it over to Mr. Murphy and Jason Bader for the, for the details.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think the genesis of this application is interesting in itself in the sense that we had a failed seawall. One of the longest seawalls in, in the, in the town, to orient you. Driftford Landing ends at Pelican Lane, and this is 555 Pelican, which is the house at the very end, that is, the west end of Pelican coming down from A1A and looking at the George Bush Bridge. It is the last canal on the, on the south of Pelican Lane in Gulfstream. To give you a little background, and I'm sorry to spend additional time on this, but it may be necessary to understand why we're here today. Back in 1945, Sally Brown and her husband, the legendary W.L. Lyons Brown from Louisville, Kentucky, bought what is now known as Driftford Landing from a guy named Christiansen. Mr. Christiansen, if memory serves me correctly, built the house that W.L. and Sally bought in 1945. W.L. and Sally also bought a house, which is the subject of this hearing this morning, which is now called 555 Pelican. Briefly after that purchase, Sally and W.L. sold the home to Warner Jones, the legendary owner of Churchill Downs. And Mr. Jones and his wife used it as a winter residence for a short time, at which time Sally and W.L. bought it again. Sally had four children. Lee Brown Jr., who sadly died on June 9th, just a little over a month ago. Martin Brown, Housley Brown, and Ina Brown Bond. Three of those children have spent their entire lives here in this town during the winter. Martin, Lee, and Ina. Housley did not spend much time here except to visit his parents. In addition to these children, their children have spent all of their winters here as well. Martin had four children, Susanna, who is the owner of 555 now. Martin Jr. is building a house which is almost completed in Driftford Landing, and his sisters, Eliza and Nina, who are owners of two homes that are on property adjacent to 555 Pelican, also in Driftford Landing. In addition, there is another Sally grandson who is living right around the corner, which if you go to the canal on the north side of Driftford Landing and go east of the ocean, you'll see a home that we all know and love at Lemon Hill, which is owned by Austin Musselman, the applicant's first cousin. This family is known, not just in this state, but in Louisville and elsewhere, as some of the greatest conservationists and preservationists and philanthropers in the United States' history. They believe in conservation. They believe in protection. They believe in community and the support of the community. If you look at the history of their lives in Gulfstream, there's nothing about them that is pushy, shove-y, wanting extra attention because of their longevity. They are good, solid neighbors. And we are here today because of a failed seawall at 555, just as we were here in 2020 for a seawall owned by Lee Brown. The seawall in question, Susanna Brown Seawall, I call her Brown, but her name is Susanna Scott Barnes, her married name, had to be built seaward of the existing seawall. Made things complicated because it brought into play the existing dock, the existing dock from 1951, when this code was not in effect. That is a concrete dock, concrete pillars and a concrete deck. Its twin is located at Lee Brown's house immediately north of Susanna's property, which was built even earlier than the previous dock. They are twins. This is not an application for a new dock. What happened is when they were building the seawall, they had to remove a part of it because they were having to put a seawall seaward of the existing seawall. And the seawall contractor, whom we all know, who came to the rescue at Lemon Hill, I might add, was faced with a predicament. He found that part of that, that dock, the deck, was dangerous, and it had to be restored. And therefore, it was replaced. This was not an attempt on the part of my client to engage in a subterfuge. Staff knew that this process was going on, and in fact, because it would have interrupted the completion of the seawall, gave Jason permission to pour, subject to the application for this variance. There is nothing I can say today that would change the current code. The current code clearly says, "The docks of this town shall be parallel to the seawall, and they will be constructed of wood." But since this is not an application for new docks, and since we have Lee's dock to the north, and we have the dock that was existing prior to the renovation and replacement of the seawall, we are merely asking that we be allowed to restore what has been here for decades. By the way, and I think this is important, this dock is not and never will be used for parking boats. Lee Brown's dock was not built and was never used for parking boats. It is used merely to take a look and see what's happening on the intracoastal and throwing a line in the water. Like an approach. That's an interesting picture from '73, which kind of gives you an idea of what the dock is used for. That's a proofing of one of the Browns and children with their fishing poles on the dock. So unlike other occasions when I've been before you and I'm looking for a variance, and it is clearly an application for new build in relief from setbacks and the like, I want you also to know that no one in the town of Gulfstream can see either of these docks. Even Jim Twilisi, who lives north of Lee, can't see it unless he goes out on his boatlift and looks south. Because there are no Gulfstream residents south of 555, we have a canal that then becomes Delray Residence across that canal. So we have no situation where we are asking for relief where we're going to affect the views of a neighbor, which we've had before, before the ARPB. We are now looking to extend the boundaries, infringe upon boundaries, have some height relief. These are, this is a very modest vernacular home from '51. And interestingly enough, except for a teeny addition that I think Ritzman is doing, this is a plain vanilla wrapper. A plain vanilla wrapper, I might add, in a town which has been festooned with applications for bigger is better. I don't think it is. I think proportionality is important. The beautiful homes on the beach have land. The homes that have been built recently in this town are using every available square foot. It's allowed, but I think unnatural. So over time, the Brown family have used their docks peacefully, quietly, safely, and unobtrusively. And all we ask of the ARPB, and ultimately the commission, is to let us have the dock that was there in '51. Plain dock, concrete structure matching its twin to the north that Sally Brown and her husband W.L. and their kids used for decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. It's obviously a little peculiar. Do you remember why the dock was in that slanted array to begin with instead of straight out into the water? Is there some explanation for that?
There's no one left to tell me because Sally's gone.
Okay, so tell us what is still there. Is there anything still there? I mean, is, is the, the old remnants of the stone piers there?
Their picture.
No, that, that was from a long time ago.
Well, yeah, but if you go back, it'll show you what was there.
Lee's, Lee's dock, Lee's here, was, was restored in 20-
Let's leave.
And you can see Lee's dock, and you can also see this dock before it was repaired and before the seawall was put in.
Just for the record, I'm Jason Bader with Marine Engineering and Construction. I'm a marine contractor in this area. I do quite a bit of work in Gulfstream. This, this particular dock has not changed in location, height, width, or length. It's still in its exact location. We restored the concrete from the piles up. The foundation remained, remained in place and is still in the same, you know, same spot it was, and it's still in the same condition it was.
So you may clarify why you had to remove part of it and then the instability-
So the, at the federal and at the state levels, the, the procedure to put a seawall in is to, for a myriad of reasons, is to put the new wall in front of the existing wall. So they require us to basically cut all the overhang back, take the dock out. If there's any angled batter piles, we have to remove those. Then the new wall panel goes right in front of it and pour a new cap over top of the wall of it. This dock structurally was tied into the existing seawall. So in order for us to get the new seawall past that dock, a section, a portion of the dock needed to be cut back. So our original drawing and design and plans that were approved by the town show a section of the dock being removed to allow the new wall to go in and then that, that small section being repaired. The course of doing that demolition, we discovered that the reinforcing on more than just the area that we were going to remove was very deteriorated and was in unsafe condition. So at that time, we made a decision to go ahead and try to restore that portion of it as well. Again, the dock hasn't changed in size, location, height, or width.
Tom?
Go ahead.
No, Curtis, go ahead.
So these are, these are basically 10 or 11-foot docks that, that go out into-
The dock mentioned is five foot wide by 20-
Or 10 yards. I mean, 10 or 11 yards, right?
Five feet, five feet wide and 25 feet long.
Yeah. And they, they wouldn't be, obviously, they wouldn't be approved now.
No way.
However, however it is, it, it does throw it into a variance. And did you address, Tom, did you address all the, the variance criteria?
Yeah, I'd be happy to go over that.
I mean, I, I think from the standpoint that, that in future, you know, future things before the ARPB, to ensure that somebody else doesn't come to us and say, "Well, the Browns could do it, but why can't we?" You know, I think that, you know, you should give a little bit of attention to that.
At this time, we can take public comment if it-
Sure.
Don't worry.
For the record, Mark Marsh, Bridges Marsh and Associates. As most of you know, I'm very familiar with the property and the Browns. And I think the board has the option here or the position to look at this more of a historical reference. They're almost one of the pioneers of the town. And I think to restore something that was originally, obviously, approved and constructed, I don't think there'd be a remiss and any kind of preferential treatment here. I think this is more a historical element that has existed since '50s, '40, '41.
'45, the others '41.
You might put some historical merit in your position in viewing this. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, it is. And I, I agree that it is historically there. And I'm, you know, I'm just trying to look ahead a little bit to make sure that, that we don't get further, you know, further incidents where people said, "Well, you approved this." And, you know, I can see, I can see good reason. I mean, as the pictures denote, it looks terrible the way it is. You're, and it should be either one, taken out, or two, repaired.
Right. Well, Susanna had, had a Hobbesian choice. She had to repair the seawall. The Army Corps said you have to have it seaward. Therefore, she, therefore, Jason is faced with the fact that he's got to take a part of the, the dock off, and then he's faced with the instability he finds on the other side. Susanna never wanted to spend the money for a new dock. And it was never a part of her landscape plan. It wasn't even a part of Lee's plan, which, which never came before. I was a part of a variance during the renovation to Lee's house. Sally is his father's former house, but it didn't have anything to do with the dock. When the seawall was replaced, they also approved the improvement and restoration of the dock. So we are here because I think staff looked at this and wanted to have an appearance by the applicant for the very reason that you bring up now. And thank you to Mark Marsh. But the reason I dwelled on the Browns' historic preservation is because these are original homes, Lee's as well as Susanna's. There are very few left. I mean, we have a smattering of beautiful homes on the ocean that go back. The Vanderbilt home is, I think, still from the '20s, for example. But in the estate section, as you well know, we took down that beautiful home that was owned by Mrs. Hutton, which borders Hidden Harbor. And so this town is going, going, gone. Good for the Browns. They're keeping the historic properties. And they're now looking to put up a mansion on the ocean, on the intracoastal, whose land price itself justifies such a, such a move on their part. You know, I feel like I'm begging for something, and it's kind of embarrassing for me. I've known these folks for 31 years. They're my friends and neighbors, as well as my clients. And if we don't protect and, and defend the idea of preservation in this town and make a difference to somebody who says, "Well, that's because the Browns own Jack Daniels?" No, has nothing to do with that. It has to do with- It has to do with continuity preservation and fairness.
Tom, I think everyone appreciates the Browns. We all know the Browns and...
I'm talking of those who would make that argument.
And they, they have been model citizens and conservationists, as you say. But, you know, I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to hedge against, against the future, but...
If we could, if we could, if there were an approval process, if we could mention the historical nature of these, of this home, and in fact, the dock.
And this was due to no, no, no desire or no, you know, move to change anything that was already there. I, I see that.
No, we, we addressed that in the points that one has to raise. Restoration, I said, conforms to the historical vernacular of this small bungalow and dock. Did the special conditions and circumstances result from the actions of the applicant? No. Will granting the variance confer upon the applicant? Any special privilege denied by the zoning code to other lands, et cetera? No. The requested variance is unique in this, to this 1951 property and to the Brown family's property located immediately north of the subject property, a one drift foot landing. The concrete docks and pilings were built at the same time these residents who were constructed. One drift would in 1945 and the applicants in 1951. I addressed the idea that no other Gulfstream residents with property located on the intercoastal waterway, or in fact, anywhere, will be even able to see the restoration, which has been around in its original state for, what, 70 and 80 years? Is it the minimum variance? Yeah. Only restoration, the original dock provides the historical continuity of this 51 home. And I think that, as Mark said, the town should support historical accuracy of original Gulfstream homes and their pertinent structures. And I don't think granting this variance will permit any prohibited use or reestablishment thereof. And I think it's consistent with the goals of this community. I could go on, but I'm repetitious now.
I think if you were coming to us with a brand-new dock in this configuration, it would flunk almost every one of the eight points that are here as a test. So I think it really comes back to more of the historical significance of preservation.
Yeah, I do, too.
When Lee Brown redid his dock, it was, did it come before us? I don't remember that.
It did not, no.
Okay. It was a restoration, it was a repair?
We did not understand the depth of the repair that was being undertaken, and if, had we known, we would have required a variance.
So I think our decision is not, would it pass if it were coming to us as a new, as a new dock?
So the real criteria here, or the real, or one of the major potential issues, although I don't really consider it to be such, is that it's five foot, six inches versus widths of five feet, which are now allowed. However, this is, this does go back historically. And, you know, I, I don't, I don't have any major...
Well, I'm trying to think of the waterways in Gulfstream where this could, where you could do this anyway. I mean, there are not really many that I can think of. It's certainly not out into any of the canals. I wouldn't go anywhere.
It might be important to note also that it was approved at the federal and state level by the Corps of Defense.
It's actually on their property, isn't it? Their property goes all the way out into the water like that.
It does.
If I remember correctly, the previous dock was in worse shape, I think.
It was.
And was almost like an emergency, too.
And the seawall fell into the intercoastal.
I mean, it literally was falling in, so...
Well, it's certainly special conditions and circumstances. And it's been there before. I actually, I'm with you on the width, but I think from a safety feature, I almost wish you were a little wider than that, you know, five feet isn't very wide when you're 30, going out 38 feet. The, I, Katie, any other questions or...
Yeah, I mean, I can't see making an issue of shortening it by half a foot.
No.
You know, because of the historical basis of what's there. Do you have any questions, Katie?
No, I mean, my only question would be, and I think that there's such a strong case for preserving the historic nature of the dock and of the property. If the house were to sell, is there any issue with the next owner tearing it down and putting a big boat out there that we would have?
No.
Okay.
No, they couldn't do that. They'd have to come back again. And I can't imagine...
The boat weight is so bad there that I can't see anybody ever parking a boat there in the water.
So, right, so if that is the case, you know, we would not approve a four-post lift out in the water. It would have to be, you know, be consistent with our code. So could, could they dock a boat there? Certainly, just pull it up and tie it off, but it seems like that's not really a, that's kind of a nonstarter.
You'd get a boat destroyed if you tie it off on that concrete pier.
I mean, the way, the way it's built, you know, at an angle, you probably, I mean, the four boat, a four-post boat lift probably wouldn't be able to be built.
Coincidentally, I don't believe the Army Corps will approve a boat lift in that area because of the navigation setback. So I'm not sure that anybody can put a boat lift there at this point.
Okay, so there's no, there's no need to put in a further statement that under, you know, with the understanding that there will be no boat. That's sort of taken for granted, is that? I mean, I just want to make sure that it covers ourselves.
We can certainly put in the condition that the dock cannot be used for...
For any other, for any boating...
The, you know...
To dock boats temporarily or permanently?
Terminally, they could tie some boat up there and let people on and off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to approve that.
But no, no, no construction of a boat lift.
Which I think we would be able to just handle administratively through our own permitting process. I mean, we would not approve that, a four-post lift or anything. Correct. I think that would be unnecessary.
It's also interesting to note that the owners chose not to put a dock, like it's all docked at all, even on the canal side. So they won't even restore the seawall.
I mean, it's really an amazing thing when you think of the size of that property, that they're just keeping it this immense.
Oh, keeping it intact, yeah, definitely.
So the best view of this, of these are from the Georgia Bush Bridge, actually.
Yeah. An interesting fact about Sally Brown before I go, and that is, there was the original home of George Rogers Clark in Louisville, who was with the Meriwether Lewis, Lewis and Clark explorers. And Sally Brown saw the state of the house called Locust Grove, and she would not tolerate it and put up all the money to restore that house. Sally was also incensed by the fact that on the Kentucky River, there was about 1,000 acres that was at risk called the Bluffs, and that she didn't want to see a Marriott or some resort and people, you know, out there on the banks in this beautiful natural bluff and limestone or whatever it was. And so she rallied the troops, and she herself personally bought 660 acres to protect it. She kept doing things like this. She was the chief proponent of the extension of the Arctic Wilderness under Jimmy Carter's administration. Her efforts go on and on and on. And finally, before I leave, Betty Brown, who was Susanna's mother, who died entirely too early, and predeceased her husband Martin, who died five years ago. Betty, after a tornado hit Nashville, personally was responsible for the restoration of 300 trees and a pathway so that East Nashville could have green space again. And that's now known as the Betty Brown Path. So these people are remarkable in terms of their determination to preserve, protect, defend, including Austin and Ashburn Farm in Louisville. They're remarkably compassionate, kind, philanthropic people. Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yeah, I think so. Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a variance to permit the restoration of the original concrete dock in the dimensions proposed on the application material perpendicular to the seawall.
I second.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwine?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
And I'll make a further motion to recommend approval of a Level III architectural site plan for a dock as proposed in the application material.
I second.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwine?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
It'd be nice. Thank you very much.
And Susanna, I did not mean to get overly involved, but I was merely thinking of, you know, the future.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it gonna, is it ramp up now? You have to go up a little from, is the dock going to be the height of the seawall?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did hear maybe one to say, you said the dock is 38 feet, only on the application, is that correct? It's only 25.
Wow, it says, says 37 and 39 feet.
It's only 25.
In the application.
Well, it's, did you guys have this? Because this site plan shows it being, being way longer, 37 and 39 feet.
It's a mistake.
If we could get that revised, we have our, our agenda goes out this week. So I mean, how soon can you get that to us?
Yeah, I can get that to you.
Okay, perfect, great, thank you.
It's actually better.
Thank you.
Thank you for your history, Tom.
We'll see you. All right, Mark, last but not least.
I'm strong here with it.
We lost our, we lost our audience.
This is it. Good morning again. For the record, Mark Marsh, Architect, Bridges Marsh and Associates, representing Scott and Lisa Morgan at 1140 North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream. We're here this morning to address an expansion to a existing guest cottage, which is a separate building from this main house. Just to give you, this was the first house I actually did in Gulfstream back in the early 80s. And we subdivided the section from Lemon Hill, which was a challenge in itself. And why it was so unique is, as you've seen some of the photographs, and I'm sure most of you have been to the house, it sits in effectively a gully, which was a watershed gully from actually the golf course coming south to Delray. And everybody said it's just a swamp that's going to be a hazard water. So we did this for the merits back in the 80s. And then Scott and Lisa bought it, and we did an addition, I would say, in the early 2000s for a wing. The building in question is an original part of the, let me just call it an estate. It's freestanding. It's on a high, it's actually on one of the highest parts of the property. And it sits up, unfortunately, all my material is not available, but I think you can understand where it sits. It sits in a very, very overgrown, very heavily landscaped, which I'll have Sean go through with you. So what we're doing here is, obviously, I think this was, if I recall, really more of a staff helped building. And obviously, the Morgans have now used it for guests and family. But it's really kind of undersized, and the request is to add another bedroom and bathroom. It's, the expansion has no impact on any of the zoning criteria. It's still almost 80 feet from the right away on A1A. It's nestled, as you'll see in the photographs, in the woods. And the architecture is going to reflect, obviously, the style of the main house. So I will make it short because Tom used up all my time. And I'll deal with any architectural questions that the board may have. It is a bit of a challenge because we're building on this hillside, so we do have to build a retaining wall on the east side just to extend the floor level. It's kind of exciting to build on a sloping side in Florida.
It's not flat there, is there still a little bit of a slope? So are you going to dig in, dig into a little bit?
Yeah, and create a retaining wall, which you'll see. So, and it will be not visible from anywhere, it has the established landscaping buffers it to the road. And as I said, it's, the materials are obviously concrete tile simulating a shake look. This was our first Anglo Caribbean house to be done in Gulfstream, so...
Mark, you're going to take out some trees?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll just deal with the architecture first, and then I think the landscaping or clearing comes up with Sean. So any questions on the architectural? As I said, everything's going to mimic what the, what's there on the main house.
Yeah, you tie the design completely into what it already looks like, and that ties into the house itself, doesn't it, Curtis? You work with the merits? C.C. Merritt and Bill Merritt?
Oh, yeah. It was an interesting time.
I knew him well.
She was, C.C. was a real character.
See, they had, the merits originally, and she had inherited all the property, including Lemon Hill, from Mr. Harold Johnson and his wife. And so she, I couldn't believe she decided to build a house there to begin with. It was a miracle job that he did there.
Yeah.
It's very dry.
It's dry.
Oh, runs onto me now, I think.
It's hollow, yeah, you're on the side, so... But you have no prob, I mean, this has no impact. I mean, it's nestled there. I mean, it's actually a wonderful piece of property. And Morgans have done a great job maintaining it.
So you're not going to put any, you're going to, you're going to go to the trees?
Yeah, sure.
Any questions? Are we going to replant anything at all?
At the moment, it's basically just as needed because it's, it's basically a jungle on the backside, and we really want to keep the natural feel and look. So it would be out of place for us to start creating a garden, especially in the dead space in the back of the space.
Really orange ficus tree, though, right?
Yes.
One really big tree.
The ficus, I actually went by, and I've got pictures on my phone. I went by right before the presentation just to regrasp everything. And the ficus, it is substantial, but it's very bare at top. It's something that really has just faded away with time, especially with the white fly and not getting any treatment. So we definitely want that out regardless.
I can at least speak for myself as Bobby Millie, neighbor that'll ever see it. I think it's a wonderful plan, and it will not be obtrusive to me. I don't think anybody in the north, I don't think anyone will be able to see it whatsoever in that open, what happens.
There's a huge dead sea grape tree just laying back behind all of it that I don't think anybody even knows about. So I mean, that was my clear indicator that no one will ever even know what's going on back there.
We did not hear from any neighbors.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I have, seems fine, mate.
Beautiful job. Now, I think, can we have a motion?
Katie, anything from you? Katie, anything from you?
No.
I'm making points with Kate, good.
I'll make a motion to approve a landing clearing, a land clearing permit to clear existing vegetation to allow for an addition to an existing guest house.
I second.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwine?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
And I'll make a further motion to approve a Level II architectural site plan to permit a 468-square-foot addition to an existing guest house.
I second.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mrs. Orthwine?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Mark, one question. Where are they going to come in from to do the construction?
From the driveway on the other part, mostly. And that driveway, it's, I think, Tom, you know, that's the original drive to Lemon Hill, part of it.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good job on the pier.
Items by staff?
Just appreciate Board Member Orthwine for her attendance as an alternate again this month, making our quorum, and keeping staff on our toes by having some really insightful comments. So thank you, everyone.
I better get used to it, Katie. Items by board? Anybody, Curtis or Katie, anything?
No.
There's no public here? We are adjourned. Thank you.
I have a 20-minute speech.